To call a order, the Village Board Regular Meeting of July 25, 2013, to order at 7:00 PM. Village Clerk Simske, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mayor Gunther.
Present.
The clerks here, Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Berry.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle. Our Public Works Director and Assistant Village Manager May.
Here.
And Attorney Perez.
Here.
And we have other staff members here, but I'm just noting that you all are here.
Could we please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you send it to me?
And at this time, we'd like to go into open forum. And I'll ask the Village Clerk if... We do have one request. If anybody else would like to speak during open forum, we have forms in the back. You can give it to the Police Chief, so he can bring it up here. We have one open forum request from the Westmont Special Events, and they're going to talk about
Good evening, everyone. Our Board just asked me to stop by this evening to give a little recap of the Taste of Westmont, which took place July 11 through the 14th. We had a wonderful event, great weather, turnout was fabulous, lots of faces there that we see every year helping out to volunteer and work in the pop tents and the beer tents and with all of our carnival ticket sales. Our Sunday Last Fling Wristband, which was new for 2013, was a great success. We had a lot of people riding the carnival rides on Sunday. We got terrific feedback from our entertainment and the guests that attended and different reports on the event overall. We had very few incidents and everything else, so it was a really great weekend with a great turnout. We want to thank everyone, all the volunteers, the business support, certainly our sponsors, many of which are businesses in the downtown area that work with us on bartered sponsorships for property agreements such as Center for Dance and Neat Kitchen, the Mark O'Hare Salon, Bank of America, the Manning School Parking Lot. Without use of all of those different areas, we wouldn't be able to put on the event, so we're happy that all the area businesses really work with us to support us in that, as well as the sponsors that help us with cash and other bartered donations. Neat Kitchen and Bars, a new restaurant that opened in town, they had a food booth and they were a big sponsor for us. Of course, the Westmont Auto Mile, Bull Socks Academy, Sponsored Radio Disney, which we were able to have for Kids apalooza again. Kurt's Ambulance sponsored our first aid tent this year. Genuine Care Wellness Center, Neighbor's Magazine, Suburban Life, and The Bugle were all partners for covering in the local papers and getting the word out to help us with our publicity. And again, we had lots of other sponsors. We hope all of you can visit those and thank them for helping us put on a successful event as well. And we'd also like to invite the community to participate in our Taste of Westmont Community Survey. You can go to our website, which is westmontevents.com, and there's a copy of the survey. It's very quick, but we are definitely interested in everyone's feedback, both on entertainment, what they liked, what they'd like to see improved, suggestions and comments and stuff for next year as we start our planning again, which will start in the next month or so. So we invite and encourage everyone to partake of the survey, and we'll have those results then.
I know for one that I cannot thank the Special Events Corporation for the hard work that you guys put in. It was a tremendous event this year. I think the weather cooperated. And I, as I talked to Chief Mulhern, he said just one minor incident during the three days, or four days. So I compliment you for running a... and your Special Events Corp. for running a great event for a community. And tonight, we have something going on. For those watching, as Clerk Simske would say, quit watching and go outside, but this evening we have, yes?
We do. Tonight, we have our Westmont Street Fair. That's our weekly Thursday night event, which will continue tonight through August 29th, or August 29th, every Thursday from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. Tonight is fire truck and military night, so I know our Westmont Fire Department has the whole Cass Burlington parking lot filled with all kinds of great fire emergency vehicles down there for everyone to see, a moon jump for the kids, the library's doing free kids activities. One of our local artists, TLD Design, is doing... They are raffling off a community scarf that has been woven throughout the last few weeks by members of the... whoever wanted to stop by and try the loom. So it's kind of some interesting things going on, and we have some sponsors out there, beanbags out there, the fire trucks, all the classic cars, live music till 9:00 tonight. And each week, we have something new and different, so we invite everybody to continue coming out on Thursday nights, too.
Anybody got any comments?
It was great.
If not, I think we all enjoyed it, so thank you.
Very good. And we want to thank all the other community organizations as well, you know, the Park District, the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Village Board. It's really quite a collaborative effort of the entire community, and it comes together really nice.
I think everybody worked so hard, but whoever ordered the weather really worked hard, did great.
Thank you.
Whoever lit the right candle, they did good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I close open forum, is there anybody else who'd like to address the Board? If not, open forum is closed, and we'll move on to reports. The Mayor is first, and I'd like to ask Chief Mulhern if he would please come up to the podium. And I'd like him to discuss, last week was our first week with a new procedure for Thursday nights, and maybe you can explain it and tell us how it went.
Sure, Mayor, thank you. Last Thursday night, we've been working with the Village downtown businesses, especially those that sell liquor, for about the last three weeks, almost the last month. And what we wanted to try to do was to enhance the enjoyment of the cruising nights and also bring businesses into the event as well, the businesses in the downtown area. So they had requested, if possible, the Village would look at allowing businesses to allow their customers to leave their premises, provided they have a wristband on, and be able to walk up and down the event area. They cannot take the liquor past the event area, but they're able to walk up and down the event area with their liquor and then return to the business if they so choose. Last Thursday night was our first night. It went very well. I was present. Everyone that I checked had their wristbands on. It was good to see where the biggest crowd was drawn was not only to the cars, but to the outdoor music team to be the biggest draw business. People from the Knights, people from the Potbelly, all the businesses were around. Deputy Chief Gunther, our deputy liquor commissioner, is working closely with all the businesses to make sure that they're aware of the process. They have identified the Village, and we have ordinances passed to make sure this is good. We're hearing nothing but positive about it. I was out there today. No problems, no situations. So we think it's going to be a win-win for the businesses and for the public itself.
Thank you. And that's all I have. Clerk Simske?
Well, first of all, I will say what I always say, turn off your TVs and go outside and enjoy our wonderful night downtown with fire trucks and the military trucks and the great music. It's fun. Everybody in town is down there. So if you're not, you're missing out.
Except us. Except us.
Except us. And secondly, congratulations to the Mayor's daughter on her marriage to Jason over the weekend.
So, thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Attorney?
I just wanted to let everybody know that it looks like, when I reviewed the agenda, it looks like Item 10F, it's entitled "Intend to Issue Alternative Revenue Bonds," and it's posted as a resolution. And the company that we hired, the law firm, Ice Miller, they actually sent over ordinances as opposed to a resolution, so that's the only modification. And that's all I have tonight.
We'll make sure it's modified. Thank you. Should I go Assistant Manager or just go the Manager Searle? I mean, we don't let Steve talk. Manager Ron Searle. He's up here. For the first time, he's up here, so I didn't know if you wanted him to say anything or just sit there.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Manager Searle.
I'd like to request an executive session following the meeting to discuss pending litigation with alarm detection systems, to discuss threatened litigation by the owners of 312 through 16 North Warwick, and to discuss the establishment of the sale price of village-owned real estate. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustees, I'll start on this side. Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just wanted to mention that Jim and Ginny and I had the pleasure of serving ice cream at Mays Lake over the weekend for their annual ice cream social. It was a lot of fun. It's a Lions Club event, but it was interesting that we had three board numbers, and it was really a good time. So if you ever want to volunteer, just see Jim or Ginny or me, and we'll get you signed up. It's great, great people out there. And then I wanted to extend a happy birthday to Trustee Nero, who had a birthday, and to Clerk Simske, who has a birthday coming. So happy birthday to both of them, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Barker?
It's nice that you brought up volunteering. I'd like to take an opportunity to invite all the residents and all the businesses of Westmont to sign up for the Westmont First Committee. It is linked to the Village website. There is a registration page for businesses. There's a registration page for residents, and it's a new committee that hopes to bring the community together in a positive way to promote volunteering in our community, which the Taste of Westmont was an excellent example of that, to find solutions for the issues that face Westmont. The Stormwater Committee is an example of that, and also to highlight our businesses and to get information about our businesses and about our community into the hands of the residents. It costs nothing. All you have to do is go on the website, and it'll take you about 30 seconds to sign up, and it'll be good for the community. It has a component that says "Shop Local," and we're going to educate folks on the value of that. And there is a group of folks that are involved in this from the beginning. I've gone to several meetings. Everybody believes in the idea. Now we just have to get everyone out there to register and participate in their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Nero?
A couple things. First, I'd like to read a letter signed by our Mayor to Flag Creek Water Reclamation District, and it's a real short letter. It starts off, "Dear Executive Director Tom O'Connor and Flag Creek Sanitary District Elected Officials, thank you again for participating in our community flood concern special meeting this past May. We had a good turnout, and your participation was very helpful. Since that meeting, the Village of Westmont has created a Westmont Stormwater Management Committee comprised of staff and citizens. The goal of this committee is to meet regularly and work towards finding solutions for the various flooding concerns within our community. Recently, the Village of Westmont held our first stormwater committee meeting, and there was discussion about a cost-share grant program that would financially assist residents who would like to invest in overhead sanitary sewer services in their homes. It is our understanding that this type of home improvement can be very beneficial for homeowners who experience issue of sewer backups. At this time, on behalf of the Village of Westmont and our residents, I would like to strongly encourage the Flag Creek Sanitary District to develop and implement a cost-sharing program to assist residents who want to invest in overhead sewer improvements in their homes. I hope that this idea can be given swift consideration so that a program can be adopted and implemented prior to another serious flooding threat. As always, the Village of Westmont is eager to work together for the benefit of our residents. Please let me know if I can assist further in this project. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Mayor Gunther." So that letter will be sent to Flag Creek today, I believe, and hopefully we get a good response from that. And secondly, I just wanted to remind everybody that there is a Stormwater Committee meeting this coming Monday at 7:00 PM in the Executive Board Room, and everybody's invited, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go to the other side, Manager Searle, I think you forgot an item.
I'm sorry. I forgot to mention, I brought this up at the last meeting, and I'd like to mention this again because we had another situation. There's a company that apparently is out soliciting and saying that they're representing the Village selling aggregate electricity or aggregate gas, what have you. This particular company's name is IGS. The report we heard in our office this week was that somebody had contacted a resident and asked, you know, gave them that story, and then asked for that person's social security number. And we've got a press release up on our website now, and I know we've talked with the Police Department. We always want to warn people, particularly senior citizens, and if you know anybody in the community that you might be concerned, that might be particularly subject to this sort of approach, please let them know that, number one, the company that we have as an aggregate supplier is First Energy, and they do not and they never have done any kind of door-to-door solicitation. That just does not happen. And number two, you know, if you're approached by anybody, ask for their solicitor's license. That's question number one. Make sure they've registered with the Village, and they should understand if they get questions about specific personal information like that, to be very wary of that to begin with, even if they have a solicitor's license. So I just want to mention that we had another call about that this week, and I know we've talked with the Chief. I don't know if we can actually do anything with these particular folks and run them down, but I've also contacted our consultant that we used, and I don't know if he can do some kind of reporting through the ICC, but this particular company, you know, we will try to draw their attention. Apparently, this is a tactic that some of their salespeople are using. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. I'll go on to Trustee Scott.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Now, I know Trustee Addington probably has a little bit of stuff this evening.
Just one thing. August the 14th, which is just a couple of weeks away, the Westmont Lions Club is going to be bringing into Westmont two of the buses that we sponsor us through our Alliance of Illinois Foundation. One is a hearing testing bus, and for those wives out there who want to find out whether it's real hearing loss or selective hearing loss, get your husbands over to Mays Lake on August the 14th to do that. The other bus that's coming in is equally, if not more important, especially for those of us who are a little older. It's the Diabetic Retinopathy Bus. What they do is, for those that are 55 years or older, they actually take a photograph of your eye, and that photograph is then sent to the University of Optometrists and is reviewed, and to determine if they see any problems with either macular degeneration or if there is anything that they see with regard to diabetic retinopathy. And those results are then, if they see something, then you get a letter and it's referred. But both, here's the key word, both tests are free, and it's something that we do as the Lions. I think, as a lot of people know, it was 1925 when Helen Keller challenged us to take on the plight of the blind and the deaf, and these two buses are part of that crusade. So it's free. It'll be in the parking lot at Mays Lake. I think 9:00 to noon is the hours, and everyone is more than welcome to come, and we'll get some flyers and things out and some more information, but you'll find it easy and, like I said, very important for those of us who are a little longer of tooth. And that's it, Searle.
Thank you. Trustee Barrett?
I just have one item on the...
Oh, you're got a...
On July 13th, I was able to attend the DuPage Mayor and Managers Conference for newly-elected officials. Great event. Was able to meet with other trustees, other mayors, other managers from DuPage County, and overall, it was a great event, and was able to represent Westmont. I had to miss a little of the taste, but it was worth it, so.
All right. Thank you. Agenda Item Six is items to be removed from the consent agenda. And do any of the Board members want any item removed from the consent agenda? I'd ask Manager Searle to please read the consent agenda.
Okay. First, we have the Village Board meetings from July 11th, and of course, we only have one set now because of the new rotation schedule, so that's under the consent agenda. We have Finance Ordinance Number Seven, and the amount is $756,688.26. And then we have the following purchase orders. Burns &amp; McDonald for $5,004.25. SolarWinds Net Inc. for $5,340. Robert Bear Services for $5,491. Traffic Control Inc. for $6,557. And Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus, which is our auditing firm, for $6,625. Don Morris Architects for $5,054.25. Then we have Nettle Creek Nursery for $31,570, and that represents a total of purchase orders
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Addington, so moved.
Second, Scott.
Motion was made and seconded on the question. If none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Moving on, the Agenda Item Eight, Public Hearing. Public Hearing, the Fiscal Year 2013-2014 Appropriation Ordinance. Board to conduct a public hearing for the fiscal year 2013-2014, and I'd ask Manager Searle to please read.
Okay. Well, the background on this is the appropriation ordinance is our legal spending authority document that we have to approve annually, and this is required by state statute, and it sets the legal limit in terms of what we can spend. And I will, at this point, turn it over to our Finance Director and let him answer any specific questions Board members might have, but as intended, this is the actual public hearing for folks to comment on it. Notice has been published in the paper. It's been available for review. I know we've gotten some questions from the public, and we do answer those as quickly as we can.
So we want Spencer to present it and then open it up to the public?
Yeah. Well, the real point is, yeah, is to allow the public to...
Have input, okay.
Yeah.
Sure. So I just wanted to kind of give a brief overview of it, you know, for the benefit of the public that may be here to speak on it. First thing I just wanted to mention is to highlight, as Ron pointed out, this is our legal limit. As you may or may not be aware, the Board has previously passed the budget, which was, you know, the more of the financial plan, which we try to follow. This is our legal spending limit, which is sort of the very maximum that we can spend, and so as members of the public are looking and comparing the budget to the appropriation ordinance, they would definitely see that there's the higher amounts are in the appropriation ordinance. It's, you know, we sort of build in some additional amounts in case we get additional revenue that we're able to spend, especially in grant areas for those kind of things. You'll see that. Additionally, I did want to mention, for the benefit of the Board as well as the public, that there's a few items that came to our attention, that there were a couple of formula issues with the version that was posted as part of the packet. There's a few things where the comments or the description didn't quite match what it should have, and we will change that after the public hearing's completed, but before we actually pass it. So when it comes up on the agenda for Board action, we'll go through those at that point. So then, just to summarize, in the appropriations ordinance, it's done by fund, and we're appropriating in the general, for the total general government, the draft had us appropriating about $5,346,500. For public safety, the amount was $5,316,000. Sorry, that's, for fire was $5,316,000. For police, it's $10,683,000. And then in the general fund for public works, it's $5,163,500. Total corporate fund amount of $26,509,500. And we had the Convention Tourism Fund for $777,000. The Downtown Parking Fund for $10,000. Vehicle Replacement Fund for $806,000. Capital Projects for $3,996,500. Motor Fuel Tax for $3,835,000. The IMRF and FICA Fund for $2,200,000. The Water Fund for $10,667,000. And then the Library, which has a separate board, but we are their financial responsibility and actually have the appropriation and the levy for them, and the amount they have put forward is $2,967,500 for a grand total, and the draft appropriation of $51,758,500. At this time, I'd like to open it up for anybody in the audience who has any questions about the budget appropriation ordinance. If not, then we'll ask if any of the trustees have any questions. If not, then we'll move on. Later, we'll have a motion to that.
Do we have a motion to close?
Close the public, yes. I will now close the public hearing. Should I hit the gal? Motion to close the public.
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Addington.
Motion to close. Close the public hearing. Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Thank you. Unfinished business, emergency telephone system, Board of DuPage County, intergovernmental agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving a revised intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with DuPage County for the reimbursement of public safety, answering point, consolidation costs with the Village of Downers Grove. Manager Searle.
Yes, this is something that came to us kind of the last minute from DuPage County. As indicated, we approved an IGA almost two years ago, and we are seeking to actually receive those funds now, and the county, State's Attorney, as well as their auditor, has asked that we approve a revision to that agreement since it's been two years, and that's why this was added as a revision to the agenda, because with our new schedule, they didn't give us a whole lot of time in order to approve this. They wanted it by the end of the month. There's nothing extraordinarily different here. This is funds that was previously approved through an IGA that we were supposed to receive from the county. We have our expert on the radio system here, Deputy Chief Connelly. If anybody has any questions, not only is he very knowledgeable from the perspective of what we're doing with the radio system, but as some people may or may not know, he's actually a representative on the ETSB, the Board that actually runs the County 911 System, and he represents the Fire Association on that board. So I'm sure if you have any technical questions that I can't answer, he can probably answer.
Thank you for your confidence, Manager Searle. Manager summarized that it's about a $233,000 reimbursement covering expenses the Village has expended since the time of consolidation with Downers Grove, going back approximately two years ago, up until completion of our radio system, which just went live last week.
Is it pretty much as expected, what we projected?
Exactly. Our costs were approximately $2,000 less than what we told ETSB they would be, so we're on budget.
Good.
Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as read.
So moved, Seneca.
Second, Nero.
And the question? Second, did you get first?
I got it. I got it, Scott. I don't think there was a question, and I think we just need a roll call.
Yeah, I just... Roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Agenda Item 10, New Business. 136 North Cass Avenue to Downtown Development Grant Request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a Downtown Development Grant Request from Sharon M. Lockhart, in the amount of $3,038. Manager Searle.
This applicant is requesting assistance in the amount of $6,076 as cost to install a new fire alarm system. The work is considered a life safety improvement, is eligible for a matching 50% grant, and I guess I'll take this opportunity to mention, for the public's benefit, that we had a committee... had a committee meeting earlier this evening. And these types of issues will be coming before the board on the consent agenda in the future, based on the discussion of that committee. But I just wanted to mention that for the public's information. And I'll turn it over to our community development director, Shannon Malik, and she can explain the details of the grant request.
Sure, Dr. Lockhart has applied for a 50% matching grant. The grant committee met a couple of weeks back and didn't have any issue with approval of the award, and thought that the amount requested would be eligible for the full 50% match. So that would actually be a grant of $3,038. And Dr. Lockhart is also here, if there are any questions for her.
If there's anybody from the audience have a question, none from the board, then I'll entertain a motion...
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second Nero.
Just fight over it, that's okay.
Go ahead, Steve. Tell you. You got who made that second?
Yes.
On the question, any questions?
No.
If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business 10B, 206 North Cass Avenue to downtown development grant request. The board to consider an ordinance approving a downtown development grant request from Mulan Chapa Chek. Is that closed? Property owner in the amount of one...
Not really, it's Khupah Chek.
Oh.
Okay, Khupah Chek.
I have problem with it 50 years.
I'll tell you what the amount, I'll read the amount. $1,995, I got that right.
Very good. Very good.
Similar to the last item, the grant committee met back on July 2nd and didn't have any issue with the request for a full 50% match. The cost of the work in total was $3,990, and the amount of the request is $1,995.
Well, like probably most of you know, I'm involved in business investment from 1972, like 40 years. And this is first time when I'm asking for grant or help, even if we do lot of job, like we make tug pointing and we didn't charge. And the time when they erect that building just only beside us, it was like ask, not really ask, no, but was suggested to us that since that building have owning, so we should put owning too. So we did. I never asked for any help. And matter of fact, this year we changed electric, that 41th gas, brand new service, because it was outdated, it was almost danger, looking ugly. I did not ask for grant, so this is actually first time when I'm asking.
Well, we're happier taking advantage of our grant program.
And we're happier.
Somebody that's been in business since '72 here, you should take advantage of this. Any questions from...
None.
No?
Then I'll also entertain a motion to approve this grant.
I just have something to add. I just noticed that the ordinance that was drafted indicates that the amount is wrong, and I would need to amend the ordinance to indicate that the amount granted would be $1,995.
$1,995.
So the agenda amount is right, it was just on the ordinance.
It was just on the ordinance itself.
So the motion should be to approve the $1,995.
Right.
Yes.
I will make the motion to approve the grant for 206 North Cass at $1,995.
The second, Barker. Motion been made in second. Any, on the question? Anybody seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick comment, I know that we're getting a running balance. I think one of the things I talked to Manager Searle about is that these life safety grants now are, a lot of the businesses are downtown, are starting to look to it for some assistance. So I don't know if we should look maybe to increase that line item at some point. So it's just, as I see it running, but as I, I must have had three or four businesses asking me where to get the grant request, information, so.
Is it possible to get a complete listing of those people that have taken advantage of that?
Just this fiscal year, or?
Yes.
Sure?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Moving on to 10C, 999 Oakmont Plaza Drive, Sun Life Assurance Company of Canada. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from Sun Life Assurance Company of Canada for an office building in the Office Research District. The first reading, zoning code variance to increase the number of allowable signs. Two, zoning code variance to increase the maximum grow square footage of signage. Manager Searle.
The applicant is requesting approval of a multi-tenant monument sign located in landscaping area, the building's entrance off of Pasquenelli. The variations are for a third sign and additional size, and we have a representative from the petitioner here this evening to explain or answer any questions that the board members might have.
Good evening, my name's Mike Quaid, I'm with NEI Hifman. I'm the property manager for 999 Oakmont. We're petitioning two variations to install, as the doors manager mentioned, a six-panel tenant monument sign. There's really two reasons why we're asking for the variations. One, one is we believe that the tenant monument sign will increase in our leasing effort. The current vacancy rate in the I-88 corridor, including Westmont, is right around 14%. And really, we need all the help we can get when it comes to finding new tenants. And to being able, and being able to offer a panel on the monument sign to give a prospective tenant a presence of the building will really help our, will really help the cause. Additionally, the sign will have the building address located on the bottom of the sign, which currently, the building address is located above the main entrance, which is about 200 feet from the street. It makes it fairly difficult for the public to find the building. So not only will it aid in our securing a new tenant, but also the public in finding a new, finding the location.
Any questions from the audience or trustees?
No, no issues with line of sight or...
Is there a, is there a potential drawing or architecture render that we could possibly see?
I have one. Should I put it on?
Yeah, it'd be fine. It's kind of hard to see in our packet.
Gotcha. So currently, let me, so this is our ten opena monument sign. It will allow for six tenant names, as well as offer the building address. We modeled the sign after several architectural features of the building, and I have a picture of that that'll help explain. So this is the monument sign, and this is the building. So as you see, as the stories go up, each floor is offset, giving it kind of like a pyramid type appearance, which is the same, the same look as this. We're using the same brick, we have some other architectural lamps, light fixtures that will be incorporating into the, into the monument sign as well. And I believe there's another question about the line of...
Yeah, the line of sight is, is issue with that?
There is not. We, the location that we're going to install the sign, I believe the appropriate term is a vision triangle, which is 50 feet by, by maybe 50 feet, I'm not exactly sure. But the short answer is yes, we'll make sure that it's not in, in line of sight. Perfect.
We have the sign contractor overlay it to ensure, and it's, it's well without, with it, it's with, it's outside of the corner vision triangle.
Good.
Is this the first sign of its kind in that area?
It is not. So the entire, so the entire business park on Pasquenelli Drive, I'd say every competing building that we're, that we're put up against has a ten opena monument sign. I have some pictures of them, if you'd like to see that. But it is up and down Pasquenelli, I mean, there's...
If you go to Executive Plaza, they have the similar, if you go down to Quail Ridge, they have similar.
Yeah, that's a very nice sign.
Looks nice.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. One thing that I think I should, I think I forgot to mention is that about a couple weeks ago, I was, I presented the same sign in front of the planning and zoning committee, and they approved, so everything made it through their, through their approval, so.
Looks good.
Good.
Looks great.
Any additional questions? Anybody from the public? So then I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance that would, number one, zoning code of variance to increase the number of allowable signs, and two, zoning code variance to increase the maximum grow square footage of signage.
Motion to approve one and two. Seneca.
Second, Addington.
Motion was made in second. Seeing no questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Next agenda item, 237, thank you.
Thanks so much.
I should have thanked you before I, all right. 237 North Cass Avenue, Oakwood Lighting Electric Service Incorporated. Board to consider an ordinance approving a development permit request from Robert and Rebecca Reiningen?
Franken.
To operate Oakwood Lighting Electric Service at 237 North Cass Avenue. First reading, Manager Searle.
Applicant is in the process of buying the existing trade ball bearing storefront, with plans to move their existing business currently located at 4028 North Cass, to enable expansion of the generation portion of the business to showcase their Generac line of generators. Some of the additional background is there's two parking spaces are required, and several parking stalls exist behind the building. The street parking and public parking lot is also nearby. They intend to phase in building improvements, including engineering, fire alarms, and windows along Cass Avenue. And I know this has been before the economic development committee, and got a favorable review there as well. And we have the petitioners here, to answer any questions.
Thank you, good evening. We also have a picture of what we plan to do eventually with the front, sorry. So I don't know if you're familiar with that building, it's kind of across the street from the neat kitchen, got kind of a top hat thing going on, so we're going to try to improve that. And we also are, in the back, there's a stormwater basin that is covered with decking, that we are going to put a storm trap underground and then pave the back. So that'll be an improvement to the property as well.
I know when you came to economic development, the committee was very excited that you wanted to come to Westmont, or stay in Westmont, I should say. So thank you for pursuing this. I know this building is not without challenges, so it'll definitely be a good addition to our downtown.
Thank you.
Can you tell, you know, for us and for the people that are watching, besides generators, are you going to have other items there?
Well, we would probably have the accessories that go with generators, we're planning on selling portable generators. They have lots of new technology with generators.
Maintenance kits, concrete pads that go underneath them, engine warmers, mobile links that link you to your generator from your cell phone or computer, wireless monitors. And we also have the ability to expand into portable light systems as well.
Portable light towers, like for football fields, and also, like when you have your festival, I'm sure you guys might rent those. So that, that's something else. And, and we may eventually sell parts to other dealers or to the general public if they want to repair the generators on their own. But this is all just kind of a growing thing, so some of these things are just future plans that aren't quite set in stone yet.
Any other questions?
Just very excited to have you guys coming, and I've been looking forward to, to the progress going on there, so glad that you guys chose to stay in Westmont, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have one more question. We were getting our estimates for the fire alarms, and I have seen some of the grants that have gone through tonight. So I would ask that if you do run out of money, that you consider adding more to the pot.
That is a good point.
Ask now.
Your grant tomorrow morning.
Yeah, get that form filled out.
Thank you.
Any other?
I'm sure the fire department's been in to see you in regards to that building.
I believe they inspected it to see if we needed sprinklers, and I don't think we do, but that I spoke with the...
Larry.
Yeah.
Larry Crosswell.
Yeah, he was very nice, and he, he told us who to call, and, and we've gotten a few estimates for the fires.
It's going to look great.
It looks nice.
Yeah, thank you.
If, I would entertain an ordinance approving the development permit.
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Barry. Motion made in second. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10E, 222 North Cass Avenue, Westmont Dental Salon Special Use and Variation. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests, and I'll allow you to say your name.
Dr. Wesley Campan, President, Westmont Dental.
Oh, I was going to say the other one, so that's, that's why I asked you to say it. I could say Wesley Campan, I couldn't say the other one. So allow for the operation of a dentist office on the ground floor in the B1 Limited Business One, for special use permit. Two, a zoning code variance to reduce the number of required off-street parking stalls, and a waiver from the cash-in lieu for B1 parking spaces. And number three, a development permit. Manager Searle.
Applicant requests to operate a dentist office on the ground floor, typically on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and every other Friday. Parking variance is sought, and waiver from the cash-in lieu of fee is requested, as the applicant is unable to provide 11 private spaces. The private parking lot is adjacent to the proposed use and is typically not full during operating hours. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval and recommended involvement with the Chamber of Commerce. The office will occupy an existing tenant space, and customers may patronize other local businesses as a service business. It might attract other folks to patronize some of the more retail-oriented businesses in the downtown. Of course, the petitioners here...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the trustees, thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm not real good at public speaking, so I'll just be brief. I know that the downtown area, and I'm, I'm a little bit north of like, for example, where they're doing the, the car show this evening. But I know that it's a concern of the, of the village to grow and, and to see the downtown area really develop. And I understand that, that I'm not a retail business. But I'd like to address the parking and, and not being a retail business kind of combined. We see about two to three patients an hour, which accumulates to about 100 patients a week. So sometimes it's the same patient coming back, but we, on average, we have about 5,000 to 6,000 patient visits a year. And then we also, and we have that volume, which is not tremendous, but it's a good volume to bring into, into downtown West, Westmont. We have that volume, just like I said, on a two to three patient an hour, it's a nice steady flow of traffic, and so we don't really disrupt the existing parking, create any parking issues. And, and at the same time, we do bring that patient flow that has been in the Westmont community for over, over 25 years. This practice was previously in the Jewel parking lot on the corner of Cass and Ogden. And then it was, and that was over 15 years ago. And it's for about the last 15 years, it's been at 519 North Cass. And about 80% of the patients live in Westmont. I bought the practice two years ago, and at that point, we were kind of deciding where we were going to end up. Were we going to go to Downers? Were we going to go to Clarendon Hills? Were we going to seek more visibility on Ogden? And we settled on what we hope to be 222 Cass here in Westmont, just because we have such a, the large percentage of our patients here in Westmont. And it's, it's a developed business. We, like I said, it's a very healthy practice, so we won't be going anywhere. It's been in, in Westmont for about 25 years, and we look forward to, you know, our, the new location at 222... location at 222 with your approval.
Well, we're glad you're staying in Westmont, too.
Amen.
Yes.
Always... Any questions?
Just a comment. I know that our vision has been to have retail in the downtown. However, I think there's a value with that many people coming to the downtown, you know, to frequent our restaurants and our other businesses. Also, that building has been sort of transient. There's been a lot of different things in that building, so I think we have an opportunity to get some stability. And I absolutely have no problem with this at all. I think it would be absolutely fine.
You're only going to be open on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and every other Thursday or every other Friday?
Yeah, that's what we're open right now. And Jill had asked, she made a call and made a comment to me. We typically have been open Monday through Friday. Because we've had issues at the existing location and in this desire to move, we've reduced the hours to 13-hour days on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. But we look to go back to Monday through Friday and potentially some Saturdays. The office has been open some Saturdays in the past and we're open for that in the future.
Just that raises another point, and every time, you know, business comes on Cass Avenue, I raise the same point. You know that we have the Taste of Westmont. We close for a parade. We have the car show. So there are times that your parking, you know, may not be readily available. It may or may not impact your business, but just wanted to be sure that you're okay with those things.
We actually were hoping to push all this through and seek approval months ago to get in there prior to the Taste of Westmont.
Great. Good.
The... We'd like to get more involved. We'd like to get significantly more involved with the downtown and all the businesses. And Neat was mentioned earlier today, and it's wonderful that Oakwood Lighting is going to be across the street because that building's a little bit of an eyesore. And the owner's done a really nice job of 218 and 222 and the dance studio. And so we're excited about the area and we know that the village is looking to, with the grants and program and things like that, really looking to make things grow, and we'd like to be a part of it.
Be sure to talk to our Chamber of Commerce. You'd probably want to join that.
Well, we've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce for over 20 years, and the last two years, we were not. And just because we were debating on where we were going to go and we probably should have just stuck with it, but there was, there were signs early on that we were going to be moving much quicker. And it just, it took a little while for us to get our bearings.
Welcome you back, I'm sure.
Can you tell me how many staff vehicles you would have?
Right now, we, two to three staff on most days and sometimes four staff on Tuesdays, but it's generally two to three. And there is in the back, as far as related to the parking, there is ample space for all our staff in the rear of the building. It's a gravel lot. It's not considered for parking. There's 12 angular spots along the side of the building. I think the beer garden and the tents were in the lot this past weekend, which is why I hope you guys stay there next year. Is that possible? Is everybody good to take their own take at that? But it's a great place for it, and we really want to reach out to the community at next year's Taste of Westmont. But our staff will be able to park in the rear without any problems. There's about 40 spots in the public lot across the space. And I, as I presented to the Planning and Development Committee a few weeks ago, there is only, they're only using about five, six, seven, eight spaces at most from 9:00 a.m. through 9:00 p.m. So that lot is wide open. Even on the street, off-street, right in front, there's generally one spot available right in front. So at this point, parking is just not an issue.
Good.
In my opinion.
Look out for Neat, though.
You know, I'm...
They're going to be using a lot of parking. That restaurant's wonderful.
As a resident of that area, my business is on the alley. This is something that we've been addressing to Steve May since the dance studio opened, since Neat is now opening. The speed limits in the alley are five miles an hour, okay, which is really a crawl. I mean, that is a crawl. We have a tremendous speeding problem in that alley. The more businesses that we put in there, the more traffic we put in, the more employees. I would really like, Steve and I had talked about possibly guinea pigging some speed bumps in that alley, something, because as Neat progresses, as more and more businesses are coming, that is becoming a safety hazard and very concerned that somebody's going to get hit at one of these points, and it's going to be bad. And so we're seeing that more and more. So maybe this is with these increases, Steve, that we really look to... I know Downers Grove has offered us as a free sample to guinea pig some speed bumps in that alley, and that may be something that we need to look at a little harder as these come forward.
I thought all our alleys were speed bumps.
Yeah, they kind of are, but that one's paved.
The only way they go down and out.
So that is a concern I have, but I'm really excited to have you coming that way. But definitely a concern and a note to your employees to keep it slow in the alleys. That's always the thing. The dance studio, really, they have it on signs and everything else, but it's on deaf ears, you know, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody from the audience? If not, then I will entertain an ordinance approving the one, two, and three as presented.
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Addington.
On the question? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Do you want any public comment?
I asked if they... Nobody from the public. So we will have a roll call.
Yes, we will. Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All set.
You know, Ron, before you go on, I think that's the attitude he just portrayed as something I've been wanting to see from downtown businesses. And again, I'm aging myself when I say this, but 70, in the 70s, when I got involved in the beginning, I used to ask the businesses why they weren't open when something was going on to promote their business. And the attitude was, what, and miss the parade or miss the festivities? And I thought, promote your business. That's what he wants.
Capitalize on the street being closed. Capitalize on it.
Yeah, I mean, promote your business. This is the time when you've got thousands of people down there. Make something happen. That's the attitude you want.
And I see a lot of our businesses, even this evening, is starting to take their business outside their...
Yeah.
Yes, they were down.
It's a nice refreshing change.
So we'll move on to 10F. Intent to issue alternate revenue bonds. Board to consider a resolution of intent.
No.
An ordinance to issue alternate revenue bonds. Manager Searle.
Okay, just a little background on this. And one of the things I wanted to make clear upfront, because I know there was concern when we talked about the various TIF districts about whether or not we would issue bonds. This has nothing to do with that, and I just want to make that clear for the public's benefit. What this does have to do is trying to catch up on some of our infrastructure needs. We have had discussions at our Admin Finance Committee about the idea of issuing alternate revenue bonds in order to do some street repair, possibly some storm water systems repair. We did a pretty extensive study of our streets here the last year, prioritizing the streets that need to be repaired and categorizing those. So we've had this discussion, and with the understanding of the mayor and the board, staff reviewed two different bond councils, Chapman and Cutler and Ice Miller. And with the appointment by the mayor, we did, since the last meeting, get all the information necessary, and we recommended Ice Miller as a selection, as our bond counsel. So I will, at this point, I know we have, or Finance Director can comment on this as well, we have Tom Chapman from Raymond James, who's been our consultant that we've been working with, who may want to come to the podium and, you know, explain a little bit about how this is going to work and answer any questions that either board members have or the public, for that matter.
I would suggest both of them can come to the podium and make a presentation to the board and also the audience, and then...
All right, so as the board is aware from multiple discussions, this is just sort of the next step in the process for issuing these bonds. We've done several pieces towards, moving towards this previously as we've been identifying revenue sources to be able to use to pay these bonds off in the future. We feel that these would be great additions to improve our infrastructure. As the board is aware, we've talked about previously, there'll be some things that we can do through the motor, use of the motor fuel tax, but there'll be some others that need to be done separately, which is why in your package you received two different ordinances, one for an issue of bonds of 9.5 million and one for an issue of 1.5 million. The description of the projects is the same, because if we don't list it in the description, then we can't do it. So they both include street improvements, in case we have some street improvements we want to do that cannot use motor fuel tax fund. We have some storm sewers listed in both, in case there are storm sewers done as part of street construction, and then alleys and roadways listed, just to kind of cover all of our bases. So it's for general infrastructure, and that's the reason why there are the two bonds. If there's any comments you want to make.
Tom, if you want to add?
It's good to be with all of you again this evening, and I think Spencer did a great job in summarizing. I know administration and finance has discussed this over the last 60 days and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I think the key is that this doesn't involve taxes at all. There's no increase in taxes, and we're using our annual ongoing income stream to retire these alternate bonds. And the sole purpose of them is for our infrastructure, so I just want to reemphasize that, for our streets, our alleys, our storm sewer management. And as we've all know, the only way we're going to get something accomplished that is substantial is we need this amount of money to start. If any trustees, anybody from the audience has a question? Trustees?
There's just no increase in property taxes.
Yeah, that's what I meant. There's no property tax increase.
This is one step, if I may. This is your first step that's required to gain state law approval to be able to issue this debt. Your next step will be to actually hold a public hearing, which you'll be doing at your next meeting.
Thank you, Spencer, for all your work on it. Thank you.
Any... If there's no further comments, then I will ask for a ordinance to issue alternate revenue bonds.
There's two of them. There's two ordinances. Does he indicate there were two?
Oh, yeah. One for one point. I think we need an ordinance for the 9.5, issuing 9.5 million in alternate revenue bonds.
Motion approved, Scott.
Both? For both?
Are we doing both or one at a time?
We were just going to do one at a time.
One at a time. The first one's 9.5 million.
I'll make a motion to approve the 9.5.
Second, Nero. On the question, and the way they're broken out is because of the use of motor fuel tax. So we had to do it this way so we can pledge motor fuel tax to the 1.5 versus the 9. So any other questions? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Now, the ordinance for 1.5 million in alternate revenue bonds.
So move, Seneca.
Second, Nero.
On the question, and this is the amount of money for the motor fuel projects taxes. So if no other questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
And just for informational purposes, the public hearing on the issuance is August 8, 2013, at 7:00 here in Village Hall.
At our next regular?
At the next regular meeting.
Now, it's every two weeks. Make sure I keep mentioning that. Every two weeks, we have a regular meeting on Thursday evenings.
Every other week.
Don't come on Monday.
Agenda 10G. Fiscal year 2013-2014 appropriation ordinance. Board to consider an ordinance adapting the fiscal year 2013-2014 appropriation ordinance. Manager Searle.
Well, as we said earlier, we had the official public hearing, and at this point, we would... See if there's any further questions by the board. If not, we would look for a motion to adopt the appropriation ordinance.
And I think bef...
I think Spencer had a couple of changes he wanted to explain.
Before we do that, we'll have Spencer make a quick presentation.
Sure. As you can see, zoom in so you can actually see the numbers. The issue is one of alignment, so you can see there's a 3,000 on one line, should have been on the second line down, the 4,000 should have been down as well. So I'll just briefly read through these. So the printing was originally listed as 3,000, should have been, will now be listed as 1,500. The training will now be listed as 3,000. Conferences will be listed as 4,000. The dues and subscriptions will be listed as the 75,000. Miscellaneous services will be listed as 11,500. Health and wellness will be listed as 3,500. Those are the changes in legislation. And then similar issue occurred in... The ambulances and paramedics were, again, it was simply an issue of... Simply an issue of the line, the lines again. So in this case, uniforms will be listed as 1,000, operating supplies as 12,000, maintenance supplies, equipment as 6,000, maintenance supplies, vehicles as 4,000. And miscellaneous supplies is 4,500. And then, again, just sort of a switch of the... Just the descriptions got a little bit mixed up again on this one, which is in convention tourism. So we have the expense allowance is zero, the dues and subscriptions is the 33,500, and the miscellaneous... Sorry. Dues and subscriptions were originally listed as 33,500 and should be 25,500, while the miscellaneous services will be the 33,500. So as previously mentioned, it was pretty much just some changes in the descriptions. The overall change in dollar amount is very minimal, so not at all. So I apologize if the draft was wrong, but I think we've got it squared away now.
We corrected before we approved it.
Yes.
Any questions from the audience?
And then, Spencer, the appropriation of the 51 million, how does that tie back in against the, what we budgeted?
So it is a little bit higher than what we had budgeted. Again, it's mainly so that if we do spend a little bit more in one specific area, we're okay legally. It's also so that if we get some additional grant revenue, we have the ability to spend it, but it is a little bit higher than the full budget. And that's the way that it typically is and the way that it, you know, should be and needs to be to make it work legally.
Like, point out, over the decades that I've worked here, we've never spent the full legal limit of the appropriation ordinance. It's really there for in case, you know, emergencies come up. If you don't have it appropriated, you can't spend it without amending the appropriation ordinance.
Yes.
But you can amend appropriation ordinance during your fiscal year, but you've never had to do that. I thought Trustee Addington was going to ask you when he was mayor what the total budget was.
It was a lot less. I'm sure it was a lot less, guys.
I guess he wasn't going to ask.
Inflation has, you know, nothing you can do about it. Technical question. With these bonds now that we're going to do, that's not included in this 51? The money that we...
That's correct. As part of the issuing of the bond ordinance, when we actually do it, it includes language which indicates that it appropriates the additional money for those bonds.
Thank you.
Great.
Any other questions? Anybody from the audience? If not, then I will ask for a motion to approve. It's an ordinance.
Motion to approve the appropriation ordinance, Addington?
Second, Nero. She still wants to be mayor. I tell you.
I never stopped.
Has a motion been made in second? On the question? Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington? Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Motion passes. I'm getting lessons up here. Agenda, item number 11, miscellaneous. Is there any other item this evening anybody needs to talk about? If not, we're going to move on to executive session, and there being no further business, I'll entertain a motion to go on executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation with alarm detection systems incorporated, threatened litigation by the owners of 312 to 316 North Warwick, and to discuss the establishment of the sale price of village-owned real estate. I'll entertain a motion.
So, move, Scott.
Second, Seneca.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn to executive session. I have a roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.[1785.14]